I call meeting order to Murphysboro District 186 for an education hearing.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mrs. Judy?
Here.
Mrs. Brazel?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mrs. Evaldi?
Here.
Mr. Beavers?
Here.
Item is the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four, approval of agenda. Are there any additions or corrections?
Um, one addition. ASIU's agreement for tutoring has been added to the agenda.
With that correction, I entertain the motion to approve the agenda.
Amen.
And second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item number five, approval of consent agenda, which consists of District 186 Regular Board Meeting Minutes dated July 18th, 2023, Tri-County Budget Meeting Minutes dated July 12th, 2023, Tri-County Regular Meeting Minutes dated July 12th, 2023, Tri-County Bills for August 2023, applications and reports. I entertain the motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item number six is approval of District 186 Bills for August. Are there any questions? There are no questions. I entertain the motion to approve the bill that presented.
So moved.
And a second?
The second. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.
Mrs. Judy?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Evaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes. Item number seven is communication.
How do you mean a five?
Wow.
So the first one is from Shanaz Murray. Dear Mr. Hernan, please accept this letter as formal notification that I am resigning from my position as a parrot with Murphysboro Middle School. Thank you so much for the opportunity to work in this position for the past two years. I've greatly enjoyed and appreciated the opportunities. I've had a great time working with mostly the eighth grade team. I've learned a lot from them, all of which I will take with me throughout my career. I wish the middle school continued success and hope to stay in touch in the future. Shanaz Murray.
I entertain the motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
The second one is from Sylvia Kern. Dear Dr. Evers and School Board members, I'm writing to inform you of my intent to take board-approved maternity leave after I deliver my child. My expected date of delivery is October the 12th, 2023, and it's my plan to work until October the 6th. So my first day out of attendance would be October the 10th, 2023. My anticipated return date is January the 8th, 2024, using my accumulated sick days. I've already been in contact with Ms. Finkie and will continue to be in contact with her throughout the remainder of my pregnancy to discuss the exact dates of my leave. I will work to prepare for my future substitute and hopes to make the transition smooth for my students and their parents. Please contact me with any questions. Thank you. Sylvia Kern.
Any motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
The next one's from Erica Denman. Dear Dr. Evers, Board of Education, and Mr. Todd, please accept this letter as my formal resignation from my third grade position for the 23-24 school year. I've been offered a first grade position in my home district where my children will be attending school in the future. As much, as much as it is hard for me to leave, it was the best for my family. I wanted to thank everyone at Crowthers Elementary in the district for everything over the last six years. It has truly been a pleasure working with all of you and within the community of Murphysboro. Sincerely, Erica Denman.
I entertain the motion to approve that.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
The next one's from Bethany Lee. Good afternoon, Mr. Hernan and Dr. Evers. This is my notice that I will not be returning for the 23-24 school year. I've received a new teaching position at another school district. While this news is bittersweet for me to deliver to you, I'm excited about starting my teaching career. I would like to thank you both for the opportunities you have provided me at Murphysboro 186, and I am grateful for all the experience and lessons I've learned. Again, thank you so much. Sincerely, Bethany Lee.
I entertain the motion to approve that presentation.
What position was she in?
She's a parrot.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
The last one's from Tammy Caldwell. This letter is to formally notify you of my resignation of Dean of Students at the Murphysboro Middle School. I want to thank District 186 for all the opportunities and the wonderful learning experiences. I have grown over the years, but most of all, I've developed so many valuable prints throughout the district that I can truly call family. With this being said, I've been offered an opportunity that I do not want to pass up. Thank you for all the cherished memories, and I hope you will find a replacement for the middle school soon. Sincerely, Tammy Caldwell.
I entertain the motion to approve that.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. I do not see a fishbowl, so it won't be a fishbowl item. I don't see a fair insulation act listed, so let's move on quickly. Moving on to item number 10, recognition of the audience. The Board of Education welcomes the audience to make public or employee comments. The Board has set aside time in the agenda specifically for this purpose. Pursuant to Board Policy 2.230, each speaker shall be limited to a five-minute presentation. Please be aware that while this is a time for the public to express its opinion and/or concerns, the Board may or may not comment regarding public presentations. If a matter of public comment warrants discussion or action of the Board of Education, such discussion or action will be added to the agenda of a future meeting. Are there any public concerns?
Um, I'll have Hearst Rocher present under item number eight, which is the Board approving approval of the agreement to work with Hearst Rocher, so they'll kind of go through what's on the projector at that point, okay?
Okay. Are there any employee concerns? Thank you for coming. Moving on, item number one under old business is approval of agreement to work with Hearst Rocher on the Murphysboro High School parking lot extension.
Um, I got the approval to go out to do the project, but I forgot because we enlisted Hearst Rocher to have that approved, so we're kind of going, that's why it's old business.
Okay.
So, um, in good news that, weather permitting, it looks like they'll pave it starting tomorrow, so it will-
Thursday.
Oh, yeah, tomorrow's only Wednesday, right. Thursday and Friday is the projected, so it will be a surface that can be parked on for the Carbondale game, so.
Wow.
And maybe-
Don't jinx it.
And- I would say that maybe there'll be even electricity out there.
Well, I know people. I know.
One thing should be- She sits here in a meeting and says, "We both know what." I'll entertain the motion to approve the agreement to work on the parking lot project. It's moving right along.
Moving right along.
Moving right along.
So moved.
And a second?
Second. Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Evaldi?
Yes.
Mrs. Judy?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes. Item number one under new business is tentative FY '24 budget and set hearing date for the budget hearing.
You should have that at your place. On display, and Mr. Carrington posted the proposed budget on our website, so it's really on display for the world to see until the September 4th. Bounce budget, and we'll talk about it in September, unless you want to need any information today.
I haven't had a chance.
That's why it's on-
Is that in the same format on the website that we see it with basically the Excel spreadsheet?
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a PDF document on-
But it's the same format?
Yeah, it's exactly, it's that.
Yeah. You know, just for the public's sake, it, it's very hard to understand if you aren't familiar with the budget, and I, I just wonder in the future if we can do anything to help people understand, is like, just to describe, here's what each fund, you know, in, in plain speak, what, what it means and, and everything, um, yeah, for, and all the education funds, and, you know, just what comes out of what, but just to be as open and as, you know, as we can be, but nothing for this year, just, but, uh, might be useful.
I can work, work on something for the budget hearing, um, and something that we can post on the, on our website with, along with the budget, so just like description.
A budget narrative is kind of what they call, but, um, so.
We could do that.
To reflect the budget hearing, needs to be 5:45 PM on September 26th. You never remain on review until then. I'll entertain a motion to have it on display and set the hearing.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item number two is fundraising for the 23-24 school year. See the same actors in each building, and any questions? Now I entertain a motion to approve fundraising.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Item number three, approved salary and compensation report under Public Act 96-43434, which is enclosure one. I entertain the motion to approve that.
So moved.
And a second?
Second. Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Evaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Judy?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes. Item number four is approved salary and compensation act under Public Act 97-0256, which is enclosure number two.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Mrs. Evaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Judy?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
These will both be posted on our website, the district website after tonight.
Item number five is information, start of school information and registration.
Had a pretty smooth first two days. I think that, um, even like logistics, like busing, much improved from last year, so I know Robinson's in their second year as our service provider, and just the efficiencies of those first two days have been better. Obviously, General has those two days where the kindergartners are divided, so, um, carpool and, you know, the pickup and drop off is a little bit slower on that first day when you're dropping off your little ones, but, uh, yeah, I mean, we haven't had a single call on cars being backed up to 13, so that's, that's progress, so we're, we're plugging along. Lots and lots of happy faces. I've visited, yesterday I visited the middle school, today I was at the high school, and then I'm gonna go to Crowthers tomorrow, and Friday I'll be at the General, so. I'm in Miss Hallfields class on Friday, so, yeah.
Any questions? Item number six is approval of the threat assessment procedure and team. Any thing on that, or do you want to-
This is the second, this is the second year it's been a requirement by, so you can see on the second page that the team members for participation, so. We're exceeding the statutory requirement, so. And we've already, yeah, we've already done foree training and with our new staff too.
Second.
And a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Number seven, approved inter-agency co-op agreement with migrant education head start.
Annual requirement.
I entertain the motion to approve that.
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item number eight, approval of agreement to work with Hearst Rocher Architect on the Murphysboro High School new gym project.
So you're on the stage.
Thank you. We're very happy to be here. We've been working with your committee for a few months now, and have developed what we would call a conceptual plan for the school, or for the school, high school addition, which includes the, the main competitive gym. Let's go back to the- Yeah, you can't go backwards.
I just did. Keep going?
Yeah. That's good, right there. The main competitive gym along with support spaces, and we took, your committee's pretty stout. We took a, what I would consider to be a whirlwind tour of a number of gyms around Southern Illinois, some that have been in place a while, some that are fairly new, and the most important thing about that was to hear what the district liked, but also what they didn't like, because no one ever actually likes exactly what someone else has, and so it was, it was really a great learning experience for us to get input. What you'll see here is a conceptual site plan that shows the location of it, and it kind of squares up with the road, the entrance road that comes in. You'll see it, it'll actually fill this whole lawn area from the existing gym here north to the road, and from the vocational wing out into the existing parking lot, and will contain also a connecting corridor that you'll see on the floor plan to the main entrance, the existing main entrance of the high school. This is a, a little bit of a, so if you can imagine that drawing you just saw, this twisted 90 degrees to the right, so we, it's a rotated view. This shows the floor plan as, with all of the ma, the primary bleacher sections retracted, and this tan area would be where the wood floor is. So it will support two full cross courts like you have now and a main competitive floor, and it is surrounded by support space, including a weight, an aerobic center, locker rooms, toilets, and a multipurpose room. It will connect back into an existing space that'll be remodeled for a locker room as well, and this is that corridor connection that I spoke about. Back in the, would be the southwest corner, is a concession stand that was positioned so that it could serve both the existing gym and the new gym located between them. There would be about 2,000 seats in the gym, so it would be easily sizable enough to hold sectional or regional tournaments as well.
Quick question?
Yes, sir.
So on the top, go back more, on the top of the locker room on the top?
Yes.
So that's an existing space tied in?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and that is really arranged as, at least at this conceptual level, is the thought is that that would be a varsity basketball locker room. It, you have a, a lot, an existing locker room that has a very large shower area, and the shower area is not used so much anymore, so it'll take one-third of that, move it into the varsity locker room, and then take kind of what is now a narrow section and develop that for a varsity basketball locker room.
Dave?
Yes, sir.
Just real quick, so you guys understand too, if you go back real quick, Jim, what we had is, we had a second locker room where the multipurpose room is on the north side of, right, the top side of the gym right now, so we had two locker rooms at the beginning, but we wanted to be sure that we had four locker rooms, but we also wanted an area for cheer and dazzlers to practice on, and on the cafeteria floor of other schools, so we turned that into a classroom for health and driver ed, and it'll also be the cheer and dazzler practice room there too. And then we still, by, by dividing that current locker room into two, because varsity basketball only needs 15 lockers for their team, right? So we made, still kept four locker rooms in case we have two events going on at one time in both gyms. We still have a locker room there, a locker room here for gym one, and then one, two for, for the new gym, so that we were able to get some classroom space in here, and also some good practice space for our spirit programs.
And you'll, that multipurpose room, if you, this is a great view because you can kind of take a look at it. It's not really the size of a full basketball court, but it's pretty close in terms of length and width. It's probably about two-thirds of the width, so it, it's a pretty sizable room. It'll have a wood floor in it, like the gym, and so it'll have similar characteristics. It'll be a little easier on the joints when they're doing tumbling and cheer and dance, so have-
And with moving the health and driver ed classes in there, we're gonna open that classroom, A22, up right by the cafeteria right now for another special ed classroom.
So you'll have, on that wood floor, you'll be having chairs moved all the time?
Well, we, we haven't, we haven't, I don't want to necessarily commit to that because it is a hardwood and it's gonna be a really nice surface, so we put, we have an alternate bid for four additional classrooms that we'll be considering, and if we can stay in that framework, then it could potentially just be, like, one of those four classrooms could be for health driver set too, like, so it just depends on where we fall within the budget. We know what our top number is and what we have to live within. Hopefully, we can get our dreams, the two additional bids that are up for consideration, are those four classrooms that were removed-
Those four classrooms.
Yeah, that were removed from, from the bid specs when the auditorium was constructed, as well as lighting and resurfacing of the parking lot. Those are two additional bid items that we'll be looking at this spring, okay? So hopefully, we can live in a world where you don't have to worry about potentially rolling off, like, rolling furniture and stacking furniture on brand-new hardwood floors, but we don't know that we're gonna be able to get everything we want. We know what we need in the gym, um, and then when we move on to the next, like, the mechanical phases, you know, we'll see a reshaping of the committee at, at the board level to have different participants, because this is at the conceptual level, it's saying, you know, what do we need, and then how do we make it work within our budget, but having almost everything or everything that we could want. But those four additional classrooms, as well as the lighting and resurfacing of the parking lot are the two additional-
Correct.
-items that will be bid.
So this will have also, I think there's an existing storage room that's accessed from the outside now, that will be covered up with a new addition, and so that storage facility has been relocated, and it opens out towards the field. And this, of course, is that angled wall that's actually parallel with the road as it comes in.
So we have basketball, volleyball, where's wrestling gonna go? The, the current weight room will be redesigned and reperused to, to have that- So will we have wrestling meets here too?
Absolutely.
We'll have wrestling meets in the memorial gym, or if it's a larger one, like senior night, it will be in, in the, whatever it's called.
Or if Coach Baker wanted to develop a major weekend tournament, we could have six mats if we need to.
That's what I was gonna ask, is do we have the capability?
Yeah, the, the current weight room will become the wrestling practice room, and then they would move mats out for matches right out to the gym.
Way easier than moving up to any middle school.
Absolutely.
And, and truly with this floor print, uh, floor plan that we have, every sport can be how, every high school sport can be housed here.
I can't, it's too small. It's a little fuzzy. I can't recall, can you recall how many seats?
1925, 1922.
But I think there's three, how, how many are upstairs? It'll say right there.
Total seating is 1922.
And what is that?
326.
Three, okay, so there's 300-
1270 down low.
So 1,300 seats on the main floor.
Close to 700.
About 700 upstairs. I just went and did, so the theory, the, I think that the, the committee, when we were discussing that, felt like for most game, or for most games and activities, you'll only be using the downstairs, but when you're hosting a larger event, you'll be able, graduation and things like that, you'll be able to open those all up.
And the bleachers are actually mid-balcony, so they provide a wall, like an actual physical barrier, so that you can have baseball and softball practices behind it. You could have cheerleading that needs more, like, basket tosses and things that need higher ceilings. It will all be there.
Is that where the batting cages are, I mean?
Yes.
The batting cage, where it says batting cage, yeah?
So we'll have batting cages on, down one side, we'll have an open area for activities on the other side. This, this image shows the, the bleachers in their open position. There is also a three-lane jogging track that runs all the way around the upstairs balcony, and when the bleachers are open, that's reduced down to one, but again, it's just for events, but it just shows the ability for people to continue to use that space and have access all the way around.
And one of the things with our insurance now, a lot of schools add wellness programs, so we'll have with our weight room, and then some of the cardio equipment that's added, and the, the walking, to get some wellness benefits, if that's something that, that Clemmons can do with us.
So the only way to access up there would be on the, I mean, the stairs on the corners? Are you able to walk up the bleachers to get up there?
You will not.
Okay.
There are three sets of stairs-
And an elevator.
And an elevator in the, uh, this is a study that we did so that we could assure ourselves that people upstairs will be able to see the edge of the court. They'll be able to see the court line from the balcony.
I was just thinking, during a game, amount of kids running around, if they're able to go up the stairs and get back there behind that, it'd be chaos, so nobody-
No, it'll be separated, yeah.
That was one of the things, it was Mascuta's design, and this one was, we, we went there in the, at the second school, and we're like, okay, this is really, really smart design. It keeps it contained on the lower level when that's the size that's necessary, but then you can expand out and really-
Because there's no reason for you to be going up there if you're not using those upstairs.
That's right.
And so there will be doors?
There, that's right. And there will be, also, the intention is to put hookups and jacks so that radio and press will be able to use that upstairs balcony, whether they're using the bleachers or whether it's a regular game.
And when you look at the band around the, the top, it, it right now has a little over 1,900 seats. You could put, you can put quite a few, obviously, your student body will go on the court, and the faculty staff will go behind them on the court, but that whole perimeter of the, the track area upstairs, you could put additional spectators, so if we get to a point-
Standing room.
Or, standing room, or you could put, I mean, chairs from the cafeteria or things like that. It's an epoxy track, so it will, it's, it's not a rubberized track, uh, because the bleachers will be going in it, you know, back and forth, so, um, it's gonna be more of an epoxy-based flooring for the track, so putting, putting chairs down on that for huge events like graduation. I, I know Mr. Green counted last year, and he estimated about 1,700 people, so I think it was what, 15 to 17 was a few seconds.
That's probably the coolest graduation.
And that surface can be resurfaced by the custodians each year to refinish it.
Most of the floors will be a stained and sealed concrete floor. The wood floors, the competitive floors will be, um, wood, and then there might be some turf or soft areas for specific workouts inside the weightlifting and aerobics.
I know there's quite a bit of difference between the different floor, wood floor availabilities. What is this being quoted, I mean, we've bid it out, what we've bid it out?
Typically, we use maple.
Maple.
Yeah, this will be, we will recess that concrete floor and, and put in a system that has a combination of either wood floor, plywood, sleepers, and rubber cushions, the exact floor system we have. The thing I would say about this is, this is conceptual. It's kind of like when you, if you built, built a house before, it's not ever really like you started out, but this, what this does is prove to us and to the district that it is feasible, and this is roughly what it would take to meet your programmatic needs and accommodate the, the different kinds of activities you want to do in there.
What we saw on our sides was a lot of the really neat-looking floors. It's all maple flooring, but they, they do the, the natural maple with, offset with a walnut finish, and that looks really, really sharp, so finding those combinations of, of doing maple for the durability, but doing maple plus the walnut colors.
Yeah, staining the wood floor for lane, uh, three, free throw lanes inside the arc, sometimes there's graphics, it, that all is relatively inexpensive, but the floor itself, you're, you're exactly right. There's kind of the old-school floor where you'll see tight knots, and then there's the, the perfectly knot-free, uh, clear, all-clear, all-hartwood floor, and it is gonna probably lean more towards the former and not the latter.
Just to stay in the budget?
Mm-hmm. We will, we will-
We'll look at it.
We, yeah, we, we will come back on all of the larger decisions with options and what the impacts of those are, but we're gonna fight the budget from day one. This next image goes back-
You guys need to move. They'll let it break away.
There it is. Okay, um, so this one, I think we've, we saw, it, this is just like the overall plan. Go to the next one if you would, Jim, and the next one. And the next one.
Uh-huh, and the next one, that's it.
Oh, go back then. I thought we had one of the upstairs with the bleachers in, so, um, uh, what Dr. Evers was talking about, the ble, the bleachers on the floor are like the bleachers we've all seen our whole lives. They're, they're, they go up on the floor, and then they pull out and, and make the risers. The, the upstairs bleachers are exactly the opposite. They're forward when they're closed, and then you push them back to open them up, and so-
The pages are labeled that way, but they, the graphic is not.
Okay, good.
That's what I gotta tell you, bro.
Yeah, good. So you, you can see that, you can see that the track opens up, and I do want to emphasize, and, and I think Dr. Evers was- and, and I think Dr. Evers was referring to that as well. But this is not a competitive track. It's not a running track. It's a track for P.E., for physical therapy, for those kinds of activities. It's not that you can't run on it, but it is not in any way a competitive, don't, don't feel like it's a competitive track. It's not an in, like an indoor two-hundred-meter track or anything like that. We have also talked about little things that really are not budget concerns, uh, but they are things that can really heighten the benefit and the use of the facility. Like we can put a floor pocket in the lower floor so that you'll be able to have indoor pole vault practice uh, in winter time. So those kinds of things, we will, we will be looking at and including those as we get into the, the real design of the facility.
And just in the discussion with you guys, bleachers, are, they're gonna be, uh, individual seats like there is now?
They're, the whole, each sideline on the first floor are all chair seats. So we could essentially sell one side as season ticket holders as we do now. And if we need more, we can sell the next side. Otherwise, that would be the visitor side. One end will be student section, the other end will be the other students, so they're totally separated as they are now in our gym, so they're not right beside each other. Like say at Heron where it can get kind of heated because they're right beside each other. So yeah, there's, there's, I think, what was it, seven hundred season tickets?
That sounds about right. Both, both sidelines will be chair seats, the ends will be bleacher seats. We have also left enough room between the front row bleacher seats and the, the court markings so that you can have, you'll have team chairs and table set out. They won't be at or near the bleachers, so people coming and going will walk behind them and not, not interfere with the team.
So is the, right now the press box is up on the top of the bleachers. They're just gonna be on the top?
What Mascuta had, which was really awesome, is they have the track, or, or an area around it, and then they have glass, like rails that are above waist-high, and then they had tables on hinges where they could stand them up. And then they had stools that they pulled out of a storage closet, and that's where their press plugged in and sat up top. And we're able to commentate the game and everything else without being in the bleacher areas where it's noisy. Um, I was even going through thinking the other day about which end to put them at, so people weren't walking by them distracted and trying to talk to them, that type of thing as well if they're upstairs, so yeah.
Our intentions would be to have power and data already planned for things like the press, but also on the main floor, we'll have boxes with the flip-up lid, so your press, the, uh, scoreboard controllers, the, the P.A., all of that, we'll have a direct plug-in underneath the table. We'll also want to think about how the, the floor might be arranged for special events and graduation so that if you have a, a, a dais at one end, we'll have power and mic and, and things for plug-in on those as well.
And even like one of the things that, uh, Mr. Ellemeyer and Mr. Navarro and I spoke up to, and that's why we'll be including Mr. Brown on the next phase when we go from conceptual to really, really looking at the mechanical and the, the organization of how this design works with all the plugs and everything else, so that we don't have drop cords running places. But, um, one of the things that we talked about is potentially envisioning having more of a media presence at games where you might have students who have, you know, cameras that are gonna be, you know, and doing some instant replay and things like that on our, our Jumbotron. And so how do you make sure that you have everything that we need now, but also, you know, foreshadowing what we, what our potential could be, so, the capacity, so. But like I said, this is the conceptual design, and so we were, we're looking more at how do we make sure that our, our extracurriculars and our curricular needs are met in this new space, but then when we move on to the next and we get to the mechanical, mechanical design of it, we'll, we'll, um, have new committee participation, so it's, it's exciting, I mean.
I hope the board can sense the engagement of the people that have been involved. They, not only do we, do, have we interpreted what they told us, but they really understand what, why decisions have been made and why, and a lot have been made. Things started out, uh, quite a bit bigger.
Quite a bit more costly. I mean, and we know, I mean, we have a budget, we have to live it, live it, so.
But at the end of the day, I think we're getting everything we need and house all the sports.
Exactly.
That's what we need.
And, and you look at equity, and I mean, we're gonna have, like, really, the whole spirit of Title IX is for sports-related equity. And I feel like this has really, really looked at all student athletes and said, how do, how do we make sure we have equity in our sports? And I think it's, we're there, we're there. It's, it's, it's a cool initial process. It's gonna be a daunting endeavor, but when we, when we break ground, it's about fifteen months for, for, from that point on, so.
The trainers' room will stay the same?
Yeah, and that, that hurts us a little bit, but when we were looking at space and trying to get that multipurpose area in there, I mean, it would be nice to have a bigger, nicer trainer's area, but I mean, we can get students, their needs met with what we have right now. It would be nice to get some new trainers' tables, to get that room kind of remodeled, cleaned up. It's, it's, we need some new tables and things in there, it's, it's.
We have available space. Unfortunately, it's on the second floor, which is a, a, a bad ideal.
What we saw originally was the second, the weight room was on the second floor, and trainer spaces, coaches' office, when things were underneath the weight room. But obviously, the cost, we had to do some major cutting, as we said.
Cut about twenty percent from that cost to get to where we needed to be, and so, second-floor weight room. But the nice thing is, when you're with it having garage, can you show where the garage doors will be on that side? We can bring in weight racks and, and equipment. We could take things in and out because they'll have that flexibility with the design, with a garage door to, to move things in and out on the first floor much more easily. And structurally, it's a lot easier to not have all that weight on the second floor, so, for the square footage too.
And, and your sports training, so what will happen is treatment will happen in the training room, the small training room we have right now. Icing, heating, any of those things. But then when they go to do therapy, they'll go out into a space somewhere in the building to do their therapy sessions.
I think we have a couple images, or at least one image of what it, it could potentially look like, but I can assure you it will not. We have not really had the opportunity to dive through that. What we have started thinking about is what kind of construction methods and systems can we use that will get us the biggest bang for the buck? And so we, we have started talking about things like using tilt-up concrete, which is a, a system that was used primarily for, um, warehouses and shipping facilities and things like that, but it has grown dramatically. In fact, we have used that. We use that at Jerseyville High School, Waterloo High School, Marion High School, all four their gyms in large spaces very successfully. And so the project you had, the auditorium, because of the floor was sloped and everything, could not be tilt-up. Cause of the tilt-up, you actually pour it right there, lift it up, and you're done. And that's, that's how you gain that economy. That was pre-cast, that was shipped in. So we're subject to waiting for trucking and deliveries and all of that. This will make the project go faster, which costs less money, and it will provide us with a very durable, uh, long-term envelope, if you will, for the building.
No, actually pour it in the depress.
We can get them to pour, actually, they'll, they'll pour the floor of the building first, set forms on the floor, pour it, and then lift the walls up out of that.
Where will the water shed off of this section go?
Not a hundred percent sure. It'll be, go to both sides and we'll probably try to get it, uh, uh, under the ground out.
So we have to tear up some of the dry, the asphalt that's there existing to get.
Well, we're gonna tear up some of the parking lot to build it, but, and, you know, with a cer- certain around, bit around it. Is the road. So we haven't really worked, we haven't really worked that out yet.
This, this shows you you're gonna lose the full row, basically.
And that's where it holds, that's where water sits.
That's where water sits currently. So go up sidewalk, down. This actually ended up being a curb. We talked about this being all concrete.
Yeah, I think what we'll end up with is a nice arrival area so that kids can stage. Uh, if they're waiting for a ride after school, it'll, they'll have some benches there, but flagpoles and things, it'll, it'll really make that kind of arrival and entry at the school, it'll be pretty spectacular.
Right now, a lot of that side of the building sheds underneath the asphalt parking lot.
And when we talk about parking lots, we're doing parking lots, we're talking about throw it all the way out here and then to your property line here on the road. And everything around back.
Say that again.
Doing the parking lot, overlay back to the gate, to the gate down here, and then everything round back.
That's potentially an alternate.
That's an option.
Even in that first, first row, when we lose parking, we have added so much in that additional parking area where the band will be practicing and our.
You have a lot, what, seven, eight?
Seven or eight spots.
Is there any spots in the existing lot?
I can't remember how many you got.
Yeah, right up front.
That's a net gain by this part.
You got five, since you got five full rows, or four and three-quarter rows. Plus the handicap and the teacher's lot.
They're also tight, so don't make the spaces any tighter to, to fit in.
Yeah, qua- quantity is not, we don't really need the quantity.
We got a lot of big trucks in Southern Illinois.
Luckily, you have the double line. So it's, it's a little deceiving about being narrow. You go to the center, it's actually about nine-six. I like ten-foot, but.
This will give you a good staging area for buses as well now. You'll have a right, you'll have a, a right-hand drop-off, really all the way from here down to the entrance.
We're about the same system we use right now.
We'll have to look at the double line and all that, like you got that part.
And we'll have to look at handicap and visitor parking too.
Any other questions?
Is there a similar local project that this compares to recently?
About four times what Cobden's doing. So I mean, I, I would just say scalability is harder to find. Jerseyville is a lot smaller for project two.
Jersey's smaller. Waterloo, it, it, now, really, th- this is a, this is a pretty. This is gonna be a pretty nice facility.
So it's fairly unique?
It's very unique.
I think if you were to go look at two gyms right now, but when I come to mine, I think Mascuta and Centraria. Some, somewhere between Centraria and Mascuta.
Are they relatively new?
They, they are. Well, Centraria's probably. Maybe fifteen years old. In my opinion, in terms of, of usage of space, and you, your, your gym's gonna be a lot better than Centraria. Probably not quite as nice as a Mascuta. And, and the reason I say that about Mascuta is theirs is just bigger. They just got a lot of extra space.
A little bit bigger scale, but.
But they don't have the track around the top either, like Centraria had.
We, we took the track from them, our weight room. We took, they have, um, a field, like more of a fieldhouse. But they, they took, um, the turfing idea. Where's the weight room? Cody, do you wanna kind of describe what you're envisioning for?
I mean, and, and obviously, once we.
We get to the.
Get to the point, I mean, we, obviously, we wanted to share this with you guys first, but eventually, there's gonna have to be some sit-downs with our coaches and see what they want and, and with that, with details. But what I would hope to see right now, and it's, it's gonna be a lot of coach, coaches could exclaim this, they don't like it. I would like to see this interior area here. Then I mean, if you think about the length of the basketball court here, you could do some pretty good agility drills in that distance. You could do some plyo boxes on soft turf instead of on hard substance, so you're not getting shin splints and whatnot. And then you could have your weightlifting equipment along the edges with clean, like power clean pads, uh, squat racks, things of that nature, and then you have your tur- turf in the middle to do speed agilities in the winter time. When it's snowing, we could still be doing speed agilities instead of being able to get outside on the football field and do them, so.
Yeah, that long, that long angular wall is, uh, is a perfect wall to set up those, uh, those multi-use racks along there, and, and they'll carry their own flooring with them.
Cody, what's gonna be in the storage room right off the weight room?
Right, off the weight room? Well, right now, you've got all of the football teams' pads, shoulder pads, helmets, equipment, footballs in trash cans. Their, their side-by-side is all stored right here.
The side-by-sides are gonna go outside from now on?
Right, I've talked with them about hoping that we can get a good spot for them outside. So it'd be nice to be right here so we can go straight out.
I'm thinking that might, I don't know how big that's gonna be, but that might be part of a change from off, off, off that.
I mean, if, I don't know what, we, that may be something we need to talk about as a committee too, about this here.
Why couldn't you?
Why not go a little bit further out?
Have a garage door there.
Right.
We, we need, and we also, again, every.
Every square foot we add.
Is at the low end, when it's not a customized space, is at least four hundred dollars a square foot.
I mean, I just, I'm just thinking, I don't know how big that room was, so.
Yeah, it does, it says the square footage.
I can't see that.
Jim?
Two hundred and eighty.
Uh, I can see that.
Where you talked about.
So that's pretty, that's.
So that, that's just made for, for football. I know we talked about it at one time, I script minimum.
What I can tell you is that we, this process will be pretty aggressive, but we will want to, to get all of the possible input we can. And so what you see here is a great starting point, but there's no way in the world that we would anticipate that it ends up exactly like that. So there'll be lots of changes, lots of time for individual input. And our hope, I mean, our philosophy is, we don't care where an idea will come from. It doesn't matter if it's, if it's the athletic director, faculty, maintenance, custodial. We just want the best ideas, and, and we'll, we'll take them and claim them as ours. You would, this will feel inside more like a stadium that you go to. You're not gonna see laying ceilings and all. It's gonna be very open, painted. It'll have that kind of, that kind of feel to it.
Acoustics are gonna be important.
They are.
Anything that big and that flat, we'll have to consider acoustic panels and things like that, so.
Well, and we don't want parallel surfaces. That's the key. And, uh, yeah, I, I'm, I'm pretty attuned to that as well. I'm glad to hear that from you. Uh, I've done as many as a three-hundred-and-fifty-seat auditorium that don't need any electrification. That's pretty, pretty nice.
So when you talked about cutting, having to cut twenty percent off of that, how realistic is four classrooms on the other side of the auditorium?
Well, twenty percent was about five million.
It was, it was doing us essentially.
If we're cutting this down to live within a budget.
Four classrooms is about, that four classroom, what'd I tell you, about eight-hundred thousand?
Between six and eight-hundred thousand. Similar to what we, what it costs for us to do the addition of the business office.
I mean, I get that, but we cut this down to fit this within our budget, so are we, this is gonna be in the budget we can afford, so.
It's a, it's a, it's an alternate bid, so.
Yeah, we know that if we had to take, of course.
I get the alternate bid, I just mean realistically, before you start talking about that now, if it's gonna be realistic to expect that.
I think to get both alternate bids, probably not. To get one, but quite honestly, we found, the district funded the, the additional parking lot space. And if we had to, let's say, we get to a point where we can do one alternate bid, we'll do the classrooms because they're already in the construction phase. And we'll, we'll forego the repaving, um, and the, the brighter LED lightings on our parking lot for a few years till we can do what we did with that new additional parking lot. And do that locally, you know that.
Generally, our clients will elect, once we, and that's kind of the, the, part of the discussion of, of what our options are for, for each kind of thing we're doing, is to, to, to make decisions, allow us to do everything now. And what we cut out are all things that can be added later. You don't wanna cut something out that you can't then recover from later.
I think we, we had to get realistic. Remember when we originally thought maybe our budget would go to doing, um, the Carruthers Cafeteria expansion? And then we, we said, no, that will have to be done in twenty-twenty-six when we have, some of our bonds are callable. And so that will be, you know, a few years down the road for, for the Carruthers project, because we knew we couldn't get the dream list for this, potentially with those two alternate bids, so.
Now, when we get down to, um, specific changes.
Now, we get down to specific changes, bathrooms, for example, is there gonna be another time we as a group are going to discuss final where we're at? Or is the committee gonna be the ones making decisions, and we as a board at that point will just be, it is what it is? I just wanna know when, if we have an issue, when do we speak about that?
I mean, we can, we can share progress drawings in at any time, but.
We'll, we'll meet as much as the, the district asks us to.
So don't get too far ahead and then walk in and go, this is not what we thought we had, this is.
So what's the, I think what Shannon, what's most of conception of the bathroom, explain what you got, what is what he's looking at.
What we currently show is a, two toilet areas that have a half-wall, and has all the hand sinks on it, and then a row, a wall of rooms with individual walls, individual doors, and individual door locks.
They're like a family, each one's like a.
Every one of them is, whoever can use, wants to use it, can use it. So there's not a long line of twenty-five women waiting to get it, 'cause you can't get, they can't get through the women's, and the, you know, the men pop in and out. It, this will balance the usage out for everyone. What, the reason for the half-wall, and we had quite a bit of discussion about that, is to allow visibility of those doors going into each of those toilet rooms, so that you don't have during school day or even events, you don't have multiple kids or people that shouldn't be going into the, the toilet together.
So in this hallway, when you first walk in, and you're walking between the in, right, and you walk straight through there, you can stop right there, and you'll be able to see the doors where people are walking in and out over the half-wall.
That is correct.
I think there's a picture right there.
It's kind of a rendering of a high school.
Yeah, but I'm saying, so essentially, when you walk into our gym, the first thing you're gonna see is the floor in the bathroom to your right. We're gonna be looking at stall doors of people coming in and out of the bathroom when you first walk in.
From the, from the top entrance, or from the?
Well, when you walk in, you'll be walking in from right there in the hallway.
If you come, what he's saying is if you come in.
That would be, everybody'd be coming through right there, and as soon as you walk through the gym and start walking either to the left or right.
But you'd be able to see here as well as other, other directions, concessions, the floor, but you would be able, yeah, you, you're right. And, and we could look at some of that to see how we could maybe finesse that both ways.
I agree, the women's line, especially at the auditorium, is always longer than the men's line. I think that these types of bathrooms are great for adult, mainly adult facilities, though I guess it's gonna be an issue with multiple children running around and.
Yeah, I don't think you would see these generally, although I, we have, we have seen them, but they're not as, as typical at elementary level.
That's not elementary, that's high school.
That's right.
Dave, is there a way we could move the multipurpose room left? Locker rooms, coach's office left, and bring the bathrooms down to the other end where they wouldn't be seen as people enter? I don't know, just trying to think of.
You can, right now, they're accessible to the old gym, concession stand, they're, they're very, they are very accessible. We can move them wherever you'd like.
And we kind of wanted that accessibility, so we didn't use the cafeteria.
Where's the tradit- closest traditional bathrooms, throw it on the C hallway.
Way up past the locker room.
Oh, yeah, it starts with the.
It's way up there on the other side.
It's, see where the Memorial Stadium is, it's right, it's.
David up in the very north.
I don't even think it's.
No, 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 it's right there.
Right there.
Yeah, it's not even on that picture.
Which, I mean, we have to lock all of our different academic wings for basketball events, close the gate, all of those things, right now to where we wouldn't necessarily have to do that, because nobody'd even be going out into the cafeteria for basketball games any further.
Because you have your common concession area.
A lot of those things have to be talked through.
No, there's not even, there's not even gonna be an inch of, no, there will, there'll, there'll be just enough to, to swing the door.
I got you.
That's a conceptual of what a.
It's almost like a bedroom.
It's, it's like a water closet, like a, a bath, private bathroom, like a toilet closet. I think Casey's General Store, but much smaller scale, it just has the toilet, the toilet tissue.
I got you. And walls go all the way down and all the way up?
And it will, it will indicate when the spaces, like you can, it will be red and green for occupied and unoccupied.
Yeah, they have a, a block that will indicate.
So Tony, your concern on that is that you can see over the wall, it's, the doors open and close.
A few things, one, I think you're gonna have children who don't lift the seat, so as a female, you're gonna come in and you're gonna have to clean up before you go into a bathroom. Two, you're gonna have a half-wall with a sink, and in most basketball games, people are gonna halftime, whatever, gonna congregate down here against the wall, hang out or whatever. And as a father of a teenage daughter, last thing I want, her is feeling awkward about going to the bathroom when there's, say there's grown men over there arguing about the game or something, and she's gotta walk in and walk out. Or if she's going to the bathroom and there's boys that are giving girls a hard time, whatever it may be, there's just the security and being able to walk into women's bathroom and know that, whether she goes in stall one or five, no one knows except for the other women in the bathroom, but now a guy's gonna know exactly who's in there. Landry's in the second stall, wait right here for, like, that's my concern. I love the fact that there's the ability for anyone who can go wherever they wanna go, and I think when it is in a, you know, in an airport, it makes it easy, 'cause you're not looking for the men's bathroom and the women's bathroom, it's just the bathroom. I just think when we have a facility with children, we're setting ourselves up for issues, and if, if a seventy-five-year-old, my grandmother, goes in there to use the restroom, comes back out, and there's two teenage boys talking about inappropriate things, that will happen, she's gotta sit there and wash her hands next to Johnny Potty Mouth. And. And I, I mean, as a representative of the area, I've asked people just what their thoughts are on it, and everybody, most people I've talked to, no one has said, that's great. They said, that's gonna be a problem.
What I can say is, we don't really care, we'll do it, we'll do it.
Well, but these are expensive bathrooms too, am I right? Than a traditional bathroom? The men's bathroom with urinals and stalls.
Yeah, I don't know that that, I don't know that that's the case. I would, they're not, they're not cheaper, for sure. But.
You could, I mean, you could start out and say, girls on one side, boys on the other.
What we can do is.
But with a half-wall, it doesn't matter, I mean, a half-wall's the whole thing, is if I'm.
Right.
If, if it's a girl's bathroom, I can still stand right there while she's washing her hands, I mean, there's no privacy.
And the purpose of the half, half-wall was to give, to, to provide, I think someone said earlier about transparency, is, is to really not allow corners for people to hide and do things. It could not be a half-wall, it could be a translucent wall, or it could be, you know, a solid wall, those, we just have, if we do that, then we'll have to rethink where the exact camera locations are, because you probably do want cameras on, on the areas outside that are available to the public.
That aren't in the stalls.
That are not.
So that leads me to, brought a whole other question, how are you gonna monitor bathing? Are you gonna have vape sensors in each one of those?
Was the discussion, yes.
Or we just do, boys on one, men's on one side, girls on the other.
Stalls numbered, and then each vape sensor would be.
That way, when the law does change, we are all ready for it.
Stall one, stall two, stall three, so that we know, I get the text message, I'm getting them right now as we speak. I mean, we would know which stall it is.
How you feel about that?
The new Steve would have to, what do we, what do we call it, when you get them summed in?
Would that be okay, start it off like that?
What I would encourage you to is think about, think about the project.
No, just say, if we wanna stay with those, with the bathrooms are, that means stalls on each side. Dress it to where men on one side and women on the other side, just keep it that way.
But then you have the flow problem that he talked about, and the women's line is always longer. And so, I, I don't wanna commit to any design issues, I've wanted to tell, he's like, go in the guy, there's nobody in there, just go in there. Anyway.
I grew up with four brothers.
No, and I think for me, that's the thing, is I just don't wanna get to the point where, when I've talked to people, I say, hey, here's, here's some of the things, and obviously, the world is changing, it is what it is. When I say, hey, here, and then this comes up, and then we walk into this gym, and people go, this is not what I wanna spend my tax money on. If they say that, I'm not saying, well, if they say that, and they say, white, you know, you asked me about this and I told you.
Here's where I'm at, when it comes to my job and supervision and controlling students at games, at events. It's gonna be a way a lot easier for the system principal, AD, and principal to supervise this area than it is right now having to go out to the cafeterias, they're throwing balls and throwing soda bottles down along the cafeteria, all the way back into the C wing, D wing restrooms, you know what I mean, back behind the soda machines towards A wing, towards guidance office, I mean, I've got everything contained right here, so it'll be a lot easier, if there's, if there's kids hanging out in that area, hey, let's go, we're out.
And I, I'm, location's perfect, I have a location.
Just to set. The SRO, I mean, and this will be a lot easier to supervise and maintain than what we already have.
Yeah, he was, he was just, I think he was more concerned about the style a little bit.
And, and, and I, like I told you earlier, like I, I can just see it where two high school lovebirds can make their way in there and no one can do anything. Like unless you're watching who goes in when they go in, you could be in there for two hours and just, you know, somebody's installed three.
But I mean, that, that goes for forty-two other areas of Murphy's World High School right now, it's a huge building.
But, there's no water closets, they can go lock themselves in.
How many stalls are we saying?
There's twenty, I don't know. Where they can walk into and nobody can say anything. Like if you see them walking through that door, you're like, hey, you're not supposed to be in there. You see someone walking through one of these doors, you can't say, don't walk in there.
Total. If two are going in there.
No, no, I know, I understand, but if I, somebody, if a guy walks in there, and then five minutes later, a girl walks in, knowing that he said, I'm going in the second stall, maybe in the second stall. She walks in there five minutes later and now.
Right now, that can happen in the family bathroom, outside the auditorium.
Dressing rooms, auditorium, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, there's a million places right now.
There's forty areas in our school right now that that can happen.
Yeah, I can think of a lot of hypotheticals for hooliganism, but I think to Mr. Elmeyer's point, this is a easier way to police hooliganism, 'cause it's concentrated.
It's all in one area, it's, it's nice.
So yeah, Shannon, you're right, like somebody could do that, but how many people are gonna do that?
Well, and.
And how many people are gonna get away with it?
There are students that are gonna do it, and I'm, I mean, we, I think we need to be very open-minded and think that there's probably someone in the last three-hundred-and-sixty-five days that has done something inappropriate in our building, and there's some that have gotten caught, and there's probably some that haven't gotten caught, and the ones that got caught were given consequences and corrective action to, to try to not make those mistakes again.
And with like the vape side of it, I know, almost every single, well, probably every second or third game, you or Heather have to run, Sonny have to run, and then figure out, out of the gym, down the hallway to try to figure out, now they'll be like, okay, it's stall sixteen, and then if that, there's no one in stall sixteen, all he has to do is go to his office, pull back five minutes of camera.
Install sixteen, 'cause like right now, okay, we have a vape sensor go off, how did vape sensor go off today? There was one student in the entire restroom right now, no cameras in the entire restroom, but there was one student in there. There's times where eight students are in there when the vape sensor goes off, do I search all eight of them? If they're vaping in stall two now, and there's only one person in there, 'cause it's a one-person stall, now I've caught them. To where today, I was lucky that there was only one person in there, very easy.
And how are you gonna know that they're, and they're in stall two as a?
There's gonna be a camera pointing like on all the stalls.
Open for.
Watching them walking.
At the sink areas.
So now I can tell you all fifteen people that go install two all day long tomorrow.
And if you and anyone else go in together, then there's going to be, at your first meeting of expectations, it's if you go into the bathroom with someone, there's consequences.
We had that freshman-sophomore class meeting in the auditorium today, hey, guys, every restroom in our building has a vape sensor. If you vape, we're gonna be running camera, we're gonna be pulling you in, we're gonna be asking you to empty your pockets, and if you get caught with a vape, you have consequences. Now it'll be even easier, 'cause only one person fits in each stall.
And I think that'd be great, the only downside of that is you're just sacrificing a little bit of privacy for.
Agreed.
To control vape.
Yeah.
Well, some, in some areas, you're sacrificing privacy, but there's no way you can get a cellphone, like kids stand on top of toilets. I've seen people peer in over me, you know, like, 'cause again, you can't police the, who's in the bathroom, and cheerleaders will hand stuff, or other people will stand on the toilet, taking pictures, Snapchat.
Kids taking pictures of others underneath or below the stalls.
And things like that.
That would be over.
There's not a single crack to go, but.
Buc-E's bathrooms are like this.
They are.
That's exactly what I was thinking.
And it's men's and women's, that's not granted, it's obviously.
It is separated.
Hy-Vee has, has this.
You've got, and most, I mean, I travel a lot, most really nice truck stops, everything else we stop, that's where they are, and they are where they're very private.
Buc-E's are, are roomier, let me just.
You're gonna have less privacy, you're gonna have less privacy when you're walking out and washing your hands, or when you're walking in, that's when the privacy is gonna end. You're gonna have more privacy once you're in the stall alone.
But if you build, like the traditional bathrooms with the floor-ceiling, center-block walls, it's, you're there again.
With what?
A, a, a traditional bathroom, men's bathroom, men's bathroom, floor-to-ceiling, I mean, even if you, you know, floor-to-ceiling, center-block partitions with a door, you're back to where you are.
Right now.
Yeah, just more privacy though.
Or less, because like I said, right now, we're able to take pictures in.
No, yeah, now, I mean, it'd be more than now, 'cause you wouldn't be able to take pictures, it would still be the same type.
You're just saying, put the wall up.
Right.
And stuff in the gym.
So are you thinking the state's gonna pass something, is that what you guys are thinking?
I mean, it's been on the horizon, it's not, I mean, it's smart functional design space, and it affords privacy because it is. It's the Buc-E's bathroom, it's the Hy-Vee grocery store bathroom, I've seen them in Springfield, I've seen them in Columbia, Missouri, so, you know, that, where they do, you know, the more the water closet with, where it's, I mean, I think that that's where design is, Kansas City International Airport went only to this design. Have traveled in Texas a couple times, and they're moving to that design in all their new spaces, so you're seeing it, I saw it a lot in Europe in 2016, not in all places, but where you wash your hands in the outside common area and had individual waters, water closet toilets, so.
But the narrative doesn't need to be that we're doing this just to suit a transgender population, that is not the narrative.
No, and I mean, how many times have you waited for two innings at a, a ballgame? Or, or left five minutes before halftime, correct? Right, to go, to go to the bathroom.
I don't think that was even, that might have been brought up once, it was all about the other, these other discussions.
Smart functional design, I'm just gonna say.
Means more about the functional design.
Whichever way, whichever way it goes, we're gonna find a way to make it working, make it effective and safe. I mean, there's, there's, there's decisions that go into a school a thousand times a year, and we're gonna find a way to make it effective and functional and safe, and, and.
No, I can just see somebody going from this meeting and saying that that's why.
Well, that's what they're gonna say in general, no matter what, if it, that, that's just.
What if, what if this, what if this was walled off there and walled off there, and there was an open walkway there and open walkway there? Does that close off that, who gets to go in there?
I don't know, but I, I don't think we could do a camera in that area then, so I mean, I don't.
Yeah, it'd be almost impossible to catch at that angle and be able to be for certain, which, somebody flies out the door, you get some.
Well, I don't think, I don't think legally you can do a camera, because then it's considered a, a bathroom.
More private.
Yeah.
It's more pri- the wash area is now private.
Yeah. I don't think that would be.
As I said, there are a, a, a million decisions to make. It really, yeah.
And like I said, the picture that I have was just a rendering of a, of a K, from a K, K, it's not their work, it's a K-12 design.
To me, somewhat like that.
Somewhat like that, I mean, the materials could be totally different, but that's, that is.
I make a motion to work with Hurst Rocher on this design project.
Mrs. Zivali?
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Judy?
Yes.
Mrs. Brownell?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Vanners?
Yes.
I, it should be noted, six percent A and E fees is what, I mean, is what their proposal is, is six percent.
Can we make it three?
Do you like?
Make a real turn?
Well, I didn't realize. I'm not that big in the lungnut. Can we go back to number one, when we approve the thirty-five thousand then? I wonder if it's sitting my boat.
After we approve that, so now we need to approve the number nine, permission of bed for Murphy's World High School gym project.
That's a no.
Permission to bed? We don't have anything to bed. No, they're. Six seats for new.
Oh, not yet, the, sorry, we're not at that nine yet.
Well, that's right after eight, that's what we just did.
That's what I just made the motion for.
We approved eight, so we're not really gonna have anything to bed on yet, correct?
We're not ready to go.
We're not big yet, but this just, this just gives the board, the board hasn't officially given permission to.
We're not big yet, but this just, this just gives the board, the board hasn't officially given permission to do this project. To do the project. This says we're, we're starting this project. We'll get the bid packets, sorry, later, but.
When we know, when we know a bid date.
Permission to pursue the Murphy'sboro High School project.
I would say yes.
Okay.
Will be requested.
But we'll, I'm saying, that's, I guess.
This is where your fear comes.
Right, then we're saying, hey, let's go ahead, let's do it, and it's like, well, then we have no more decisions to make as a board. The committee makes all the decision, which is fine, that the committee makes the decisions, but for the final, hey, this is what we're going to do, because if, if this changes dramatically between now and, you know.
You're saying you want, you want more info before any bid.
Well, this is a possible fifteen million dollar project. For us to not have any input except for saying, yeah, let's do it, let us know how it turns out, I think that's.
Our plan would, let me just kind of fill in the, the gap between here and there. Our plan will be to start immediately. And to have multiple meetings with whoever the district would choose to meet with us. And to have, to have plans ready for your consideration to advertise for bid in February.
So number nine, we're not ready.
But also, to Shannon, to what Shannon's saying, we got bid on the football field project, let's just be real honest. And so, yeah, the board's definitely wanting more input on that.
Yeah, I mean, we would go out and we'll look for CDB qualified bidders, and then the, the plan phase of it, I, I think that's, that is a smart practice to have groups of two board members come in during each of the phases, so, and, and provide foot, feedback. So when you get to the, the larger plans, that this is just conceptual plans that, then, then there can be opportunity for two at a time to put slags on areas that, like, ooh, this isn't quite what I was thinking. So, yeah, we could definitely incorporate feedback.
There's nothing to vote on this because we don't have anything to bid.
For number nine?
It's pursuing the gym.
It just says now requesting board approval, form of board approval to move forward with the project.
We said word bid, the, the word bid is, I think, what's throwing us off. Is there a better motion here?
Is requesting to seek sealed bids for new gymnasium.
To seek sealed bids, you got to have a plan so people can bid on. If you have a plan for people to bid on, we will, I want to see that plan. Is this.
We will, we will table number nine. We just have them, they are, they are agreed that we will do.
Correct.
An estimated six percent of our total A and E fees on this project to see it through completion, and so we are not anywhere.
So we just needed to approve them for eight, and then they do conceptual, we will come in for nine.
We will table nine.
You got approval when we approved this to move forward.
We're going to start.
Right, number eight was approving to move forward because we approved to get Jim in.
Good, thank you.
Permission to.
Nine's table.
No, you're, you're good, we're back.
I mean, unless you want to take more questions.
No.
You're out on this now.
I, it's probably been, I'm, I'm pretty long in the tooth, but I, I think I hit my one-thousandth board meeting about six years ago. So, yeah, I, I, I'll sit around till midnight if you want.
You'll be here by yourself.
Apparently, a, a parent was watching because they sent me a message saying, my ten-year-old daughter has like issues with men around when she goes to the bathroom. She's like, she won't go to that bathroom.
Okay.
Okay, so number ten, approval of sub treasurer, Michelle Levens, a Cruders, replacing Britton Cochran, entertain a motion to appoint Michelle.
Come on.
And a second.
Second.
Motion of second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Number eleven, resolution abating the working cash fund to the operations and maintenance fund and capital projects fund of the district.
This is just, we, we got our bond proceeds, our working cash bonds, August first. And this resolution allows us to move that from the working cash fund into the operations fund and then into capital projects where we're required. All expenditures are required to be made out of capital projects. So we won't be spending, it'll just be A and E fees for a while. But this is just a, the lawyers said, say we have to approve this resolution in order to spend it in the proper fund.
I don't know, entertain a motion to approve that resolution.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Mrs. Evaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Judy?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yeah.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes. And then number twelve, approval MOU with Illinois State University and Murphy'sboro CSD one eighty-six.
Motion two is approved.
Second.
Motion of second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. If you have a need for a closed session.
Motion to go to closed session pursuant to section two of the Open Meetings Act five Illinois file statute one twenty slash two C to review the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee to determine its validity.
Second.
Thank you.
Green?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Judy?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.
Mrs. Evaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.